Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. If you'll join in with me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. We have a special treat tonight, folks. State Representative Jennifer Benson from the 37th Middlesex District, which is parts of Acton on up towards Lunenburg, is here this evening. She's a former school committee member in Lunenburg and now is in her third term in our state house as a state representative. Recently, she had the opportunity to travel to some other countries and learn a little bit about education in Finland, and Sweden, I guess, also. And this evening, she's graciously consented to come speak to us here in Littleton, to the school committee, to the general public, to the Pursuit of Excellence Task Force, and few folks all at home. We're going to go about ninety minutes or so, and Representative Benson will certainly give a presentation and then answer any questions that we may have as we go through this. So, as I said, state rep, school committee, so she certainly have education, as she just told us. Since 2003, she's been in public service, so surely, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Appreciate what she did on the school committee in Lunenburg, because we had a little inside mole, physical call.
Oh, I know her very, very well, we go way back.
Yes, we know her very well from here also. And then certainly, we've been watching your career at the state house, so thanks very much. And with that, please.
Thank you. Well, I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to remain sitting since I am a little injured tonight. But I'm really happy to be here, and I've given this presentation a few times. And just yesterday, I guess it was, at the state house with my colleagues, so to really be able to sort of bring this information to them. I've also talked with the administrative leadership in Lunenburg Public Schools. I gave this talk in Harvard about a month or so ago. And, you know, one of the things that this group talked about at the end of the trip, the thirty of us who went, was, you know, what can we get out of it? And, you know, one thing is, of course, that it really had all of us reflect on education, and what works, what doesn't work, where we want to be in the future. But also, talking about it and really opening up discussions, because I think some of the things we saw were really, you know, really made me think, and I think as I talked to groups, make other people think, what is education really about and what's really important? Oh, hi, how are you? So I think this is a great chance to get people who are passionate about education together to talk about, you know, where we want to be ten years from now, twenty years from now. So why Finland? Finland has been consistently ranked at the top of international assessments in education. And it's really interesting, because they're a very small country. Their population is very similar to Massachusetts. And they, you would think, you know, would have a similar sort of level as maybe the other countries near them, the Scandinavian countries and the Nordic countries. And yet, they seem to be sort of head and shoulders above even their neighbors. And so on this trip, we went to Finland, but we also went to Sweden just to be able to do sort of a comparison as to what the differences were. Because, you know, as from the states, my assumption is they were very similar. And yet, going there, you really got to see sort of the differences. So Finland is, I had a lot of sort of ideas of why I thought before I went, why is Finland so much better? And I felt, well, they don't have the immigration, they don't have the second language issues that we see here. They don't have as big a sort of socioeconomic differences. They have a very shared history and background. And so I had all these ideas of why I assumed it must just be easier for them on some level to deliver education to students. But going there, I think, really showed sort of a lot of underlying supports through the government, through the communities, to really get these kids ready and learning in school. So the trip was eight days, actually. We spent five days in Finland and three days in Sweden. There were about thirty of us on the trip, and it was a mixture of superintendents, two legislators, some school principals. There was the head of the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and there was the vice president of the MTA. So we had, you know, we tried to have sort of a wide variety of people on the trip. So we looked at administration, we looked at government policy. We met with the Ministry of Education, the National Board of Education. We met with principals, teachers, we went into classrooms and observed. So, you know, I feel like we got a sampling, at least, of what was going on. And probably, and we'll see this going forward, one of the most striking aspects was the continuity among everybody, from the Minister of Education down to the classroom teacher, on why they do what they do, how they do what they do, and why it's important. And this seemed to go for years beyond politics. It didn't matter what political party was in power. They believed in consistency of their goal and their method of teaching. And so that was, I think, one big takeaway for me, you know, working in government, and many of my colleagues, was, you know, you have to make a goal, but you have to stick with it. And I think one of the problems, I think, we've had for years in the U.S. is that we shift with the political winds in some ways. Some ways big, some ways small, but depending on who's in the White House or who's in the governor's office or whatever, sort of the focus shifts. And whether that means funding, whether that means how you assess, whether that means, you know, other areas of policy, what to focus on, those are tweaked or changed dramatically depending on leadership. And that hasn't happened in Finland. So this is a picture outside of the first school we visited. Actually, the, yes, the first school we visited. So interestingly, they have, in this school, they have so many visitors. They're in Helsinki, they have so many international visitors. They actually have one of the teachers designated as their international liaison. So there have been so many groups coming to Finland to see what they're doing that they actually have, you know, prepared presentations for their international visitors, both at the school and at the ministry and at the Board of Education. They're so used to these international visitors coming in. So this has become quite the specialized tourist attraction in Finland. So a little information about Finland. I, you know, I had not really, I knew a little bit about Sweden and Norway, but I didn't really know that much about Finland. And that's pretty much true of a lot of people. It's a quiet little country, it's very small in population, but not in size, landmass. And it's very close and very heavily influenced by Russia. And so even the city of Helsinki, many parts of it mimic sort of the St. Petersburg style of architecture. And so there is a heavy sort of Russian influence. But they are very proud of their past and their individuality. They've worked really hard to maintain their language and their sort of shared history and culture as a country, because they were controlled by Sweden for 600 years and then by Russia for 100 years. And, you know, what they really believe is holding on to their unique history, culture, and language. One of the interesting things is that Finland in the 1600s actually made a decision that everyone needed to be literate before they were allowed to marry. So that was fairly different from most places that, you know, early on. And there was a bishop in Finland who made this decision in that nobody was allowed to be married in the Lutheran Church unless they were literate. So you could say that their belief in education goes back hundreds of years. And they actually teach in all the schools Finnish and Swedish, because 5% of the Finnish population are native Swedish speakers. So they have an official second language in the country. So all the kids we talked to obviously spoke Finnish, and they spoke Swedish. And pretty much all of them spoke English as well, from very young ages. So you can see that the population is very heavily in the southern region. And Lapland, to the north, is hardly populated at all. But compulsory education is free and standard for all children, regardless of where they live, if it's in the rural areas. Everything about education is free by law. So it is illegal in Finland to make money on any aspect of education, including textbooks or lunches. So all students get breakfast and lunch for free at school. All transportation is free where it's offered. And in the cities, technically, they have, they use city transportation, which they get a pass for in the country. They have, you know, school buses and that sort of thing. But it's free and available to everyone through university. So this is how it breaks down. Compulsory education doesn't start until seven years old in Finland. So kids go to school at seven. But they have universal free preschool and daycare for every child up through six. So this is all sponsored by the government. And their belief prior to age seven, that these aren't what we would think of as kindergarten as really sort of education-based, it's more play-based. So it's social preparation, so to speak. So they really have a very big belief in play and, you know, being kids, being kids. And even when they go off to school, their classes technically end up being about 45 minutes, and they have a 15-minute break every hour. That they can go outside, they can be with their friends inside, but they like the kids to move. This is up through upper secondary school. So when we were at the first school we went to, which was an upper secondary school, every, you know, hour or less, the kids would all kind of hang out and talk and, you know, do what kids do, but for 15 full minutes. So you think about our high schools, you have four minutes or five minutes to change classes. Well, they'd have 15 minutes. And the interesting thing is, there were very few adults around. You know, I was thinking, oh, there's going to be a fight, you know, there's going to be... And it wasn't, it was very quiet. And it was interesting that, you know, in some ways, not only are they kind of blowing off steam and, you know, then they can re-enter the classroom ready to learn, but they're also used to having this freedom. So there wasn't sort of the issues that I've seen in other high schools or remember when I was in high school growing up. So once kids enter school, they're there, seven to 16, there are no assessments or evaluations that are similar to like an MCAS. They don't have state testing of any sort, and they really discourage teachers from testing. So the teachers, I asked one of the teachers, well, how do you know how your kids are doing? You know, if you can't measure that? She says, well, I know how they're doing. I can tell by the kind of work they're turning in, if they're understanding, if they're, you know, participating in the classroom. She says, I don't need a test to know that. And she says, and I know how each kid learns. So their theory is that essentially every child has an IEP. So every child is sort of evaluated when they enter school as to how they learn, and their teachers keep track of this. And so they really see every child as an individual learner. But they don't test. But there is a high-stakes test at 16 years old. So when you turn 16 or, you know, up to grade nine, before you can go to upper secondary school, you have to be tested to see how you're doing, and that's your placement, essentially. So you choose, when you enter 10th grade, for those last three years of upper secondary, you have to apply to a high school. And that your only part of your application is your grade on that test, that's it. You can't add other things to your application, it's not an essay, it's how you did on the exam. So that exam is extremely important. And I asked, what happens to kids who don't do well on the exam? Where do they go? Well, some kids can repeat in one year. If you really did not do well in the exam and you can't get into high school, into the upper secondary, you can repeat one year and then retake the exam. After that, if you don't get into the high school or into a polytechnical school, you're done. So so many times, I had heard about Finland. Oh, they don't test, and it's, there's no pressure. Well, the kids and the parents I talked to had felt a lot of pressure for that one exam, because it really determined a lot about your future and your educational future. So these are the places we visited. We saw, the island of Lapsari is in Helsinki. It's just sort of an island. And even in Stockholm, I don't know if any of you have been there, but Stockholm is islands. There's a lot of water there. And so Stockholm is made up of 15 islands. In Helsinki, there were several islands that were part of the city. So Lapsari is in Helsinki, it's a comprehensive and it's an upper secondary school. We went to, in Espoo, we went to a school that was an English immersion school. Now, the interesting thing there is I was in a second-grade classroom talking to these kids, and they're all Finnish children. They were speaking English and doing all of their work in perfect English. They were using the same workbooks and textbooks that my kids used in second grade. And so the ability that, I was amazed that in second grade, their second year in school, they were very fluent in English and using the same materials that we would see our kids use here in the U.S. So that was striking to me. So we visited the National Board of Education, you can see the Ministry of Education. Another interesting part of their sort of goal in education was how they train teachers. So the history of this is, 40 years ago, Finland made a decision as a nation that if they wanted to be economically viable and competitive, that they didn't have a lot of natural resources. So they weren't going to be, you know, drilling for oil and all those sorts of things. Their biggest resource were brains. And that's what the minister said, our natural resources are, the resource of brains. So we need to do everything we can to prepare these brains and make them the best in the world. So 40 years ago, they set out on this mission. And so they looked at every aspect of what they were doing. And one of the things that they identified was teacher training. So they wanted to be able to elevate the profession of teaching to be extremely valued and revered in the public and trusted. So they decided that they were going to have a fairly rigorous education program for teachers. So they started only taking the best students in the country to allow them to go into teaching programs. So only 10% of Finnish students, high school students, when they apply, get into teacher programs at university. And not only do they have to apply, they have to go on a multi-day tryout in front of all the professors. So they have to teach a class, they have to take exams, they have to go through a very rigorous evaluation process before they can be accepted into university. Once they're accepted, they have to complete the full five-year master's program. So when they exit university, they are very well-trained. Now, interestingly, they assume that the students, and they do take subject matter coursework, but most of the curriculum is around methodology. And so when they leave the school, leave university, they can get a job and they have to work under a master teacher for two years before they're allowed to have their own classroom. So it actually takes seven years to become a fully certified teacher in Finland. But what this did was exactly what they wanted it to do, is they have, their teachers are believed to be equal to doctors and lawyers. So if you walk out in the community as a teacher, you are very highly respected. Now, they're not paid as well as doctors and lawyers, but they are very well-respected. And this is the truth, is true for people working with early childhood, you know, one-year-olds, all the way through university level. So everybody who wants to teach has to have at least this five-year coursework at university. So that means even their daycare providers. So anybody who has access and works with children has to go through a very rigorous master's-level program. And so that in and of itself has, is a very, very different sort of connotation to me that we do, as we do here in the U.S. and even in Massachusetts. I mean, in Massachusetts, we do have very rigorous standards for our teachers, but not for our early educators. And so since most children go to early ed programs in Finland, they're all being exposed to these very highly professional educators at very young ages. And so even though their goal is really is social play, their knowledge of child development, they're not, you know, preparing these kids for school is a big part of what they do. So I found that to be one of sort of the points of divergence that we see from here in Finland. So we had the opportunity to talk with lots of students, and they were very open with us about what they thought. Interestingly, this was in Lapsari, they do not have school sports. That is very atypical in Finland. And when I asked them, oh, do you play on a school team? They said, what do you mean a school team? They go to school to learn, that's it. So they do have sort of rec or town-based soccer leagues and that sort of thing, but they do not expect to see that at school. School is about learning. Occasionally, some schools will have a music program, but that is not standard. I mean, school is about the basics, coursework, education. So they're not spending the money on football or basketball, and that's not part of the school day in any way. So when we went to the Ministry of Education, one of the things we were really interested in is, you know, where did this start? So we talked about the 40-year goal, you know, the plan that they've been on, how that's been consistent. They continue to look to improve. They believe that their brains, you know, bringing high tech in and exporting their highly educated youth is the focus of their entire nation. They believe that this is the key to their economic future, is having highly trained children or educated children. So it's really interesting that they tie this very closely to sort of their economic development planning in the country. They've done fairly well luring high-tech companies into Finland. They've really focused on science and technology. But they do also have a very vibrant arts community in Finland, interestingly. So one other big aspect, and we talked about everything is free, but they believe in giving these highly trained educators in the classroom the freedom to teach as they want. So they have a very, very, very loose framework at the national level of education. So they don't have a really standardized curriculum. They have, and they showed us, he's handed it around, this little tiny pamphlet of, that was their entire educational framework for the country. Because they really want the teachers, they, yes, you know, there's benchmarks, we want you to hit certain things at certain times, but we want our educators, who are the experts in their field, to decide how to teach, what to teach, what materials to use to teach. And so they look at the classroom and they look at the schools as sort of governing their own curriculum. And the teachers value common planning time. They have a lot of common planning time during the day, both as the full faculty as well as departments, and they develop their own curriculum. So it really empowers the classroom teacher. And then they can change that as they see what is working and what isn't working, rather than waiting for policy to change at a national level. They can make changes fairly abruptly and change course or use different tools as needed in the classroom. And so it gives them the flexibility to sort of reach, I think, different students, different cohorts of students in the classroom. So one last thing that struck me as a school committee person is this culture of trust. They do not have teacher evaluations. Their principals usually are a classroom teacher that cycles as principal. So they really kind of believe that they've put this effort into training these teachers, that they are the best, and they don't have to be peering over their shoulder. But also, what this means is that they do not have lawsuits. So I, you know, I think that as a school committee person, that what was our legal, you know, budget line item, they don't have that. They just, schools are not sued, teachers are not sued. They don't have issues with parents lodging a lot of complaints. It's just, they hadn't heard of, I said, well, do you have a district lawyer? Well, why would we have that? They could not understand why we'd ask that. So they just don't, unless there's some really heinous crime that's happening, they just don't have legal issues. And so you don't see parents suing over special ed issues. They just, it's just not part of the culture. So I thought that was quite interesting, you know, if we could all save legal costs, that would be nice. The other thing they don't have to do is they don't have to negotiate any contracts, because they have a teachers' union, but it's all national. So they don't have contracts with local school districts. So there's no negotiations. Everything is set at a federal level for the salary schedule and everything else. And so that removes that entire burden from the local level. So everything is handled on a national level. So that allows principals and teachers to really be focused on education, you know, educational outcomes. And you don't have that sort of difficulty, both with administration locally, but also with the community. As you know, it can be very difficult to go through contract negotiations that sometimes tear along and drawn out, and they're not always pleasant. They don't have to deal with that. So I think that really does allow this culture of trust to flourish, because you don't have that sort of structure going on at the local level. So we have gone over most of this, I think. Interestingly, you know, I'll tell you a little bit about that sort of, that moment when students at 16 figure out what they're going to do. It seemed to be, in both Finland and Sweden, the expectation was that kids would pretty much know what they want to do at a fairly young age. And I found that to be interesting. So the idea of sort of the liberal arts college, for example, where you go for two years before you declare your major or whatever, is unheard of there. When you go to university, you go in with a plan. But what ends up happening is even earlier than that, at 16, when you take this exam and when you have to decide on upper secondary school or polytechnical school, that's a big decision point. And just in the last few years, it used to be that you go to upper secondary school, you go to university. If you go to polytechnical school, you go onto a higher polytechnical program and apprenticeship program after that. And there was no going back. Once you made that decision at 16 years old, you were there. So a few years ago, the country decided that perhaps 16 wasn't the best time for a youngster to make this lifelong decision. And so now, even if you choose to go to polytechnical school, you can, after that, go to university. So this has only been a few years that they've been able to do this. And so they've been very happy with the outcome. So the other thing that that has done is ensure that the polytechnical curriculum is up to the same standard as sort of the basic upper secondary school. So when a child hits that age at 16 and takes this exam, they can make this decision to the point that which track they want to go into, but they don't really have a lot of decision on what school they go to, because it's really dictated by your grades. And at that point, where you end up in upper secondary school really dictates what type of university program you can get into. So it's great that education and every aspect of education is free and supplied by the country. They offer a lot, you know, they have a year of paid maternity leave, and your job is guaranteed when you return for all mothers. And they have several months of paternity leave for fathers. There's a lot of things that they do that really support, I think, the family and education. But there is still, I think, less choice and less ability to sort of move in and out. You know, if you're a late bloomer, I would say, in Finland, you know, if you don't blossom until you get into college, you're kind of more trapped there than here in the U.S. I think there's less ability, and my guess about that is that partly because there's so much, so many resources put into education by the government, there's only so many resources that can be used. And so, you know, it really sort of limits, I think, students' ability to move up and succeed at different levels at different points. That's just my observation after thinking about this for quite, you know, quite a while since we went. You know, I'm trying to see what are the downsides? Because certainly, everyone has healthcare, well, that's fantastic. So you don't have kids coming to school that haven't seen a doctor or a dentist or whatever. Everybody has this great option of staying home with their kids, up to actually three years. So, you know, I ran, at a coffee shop, I ran into this young mother with these two little kids. So I just jumped on her and I said, you know, tell me what it's like to have kids in Finland. So I just jumped on her and I said, you know, tell me what it's like to have kids in Finland. And she said, well, it's really pretty great, because, you know, I have these kids and I've been able to stay home and I know, when I'm done, I'll be able to go back to work and they have to hold my job for me. And she says, for the first ten months, I get eighty percent of my pay when I stay home. I said, wow, that's pretty nice, right? But, two more months, I get fifty percent or something. And then, I can get twenty percent for another two years. So, and she says, and then if I have another child, I can stay home for that three years and if I have another one, another three years, up to nine years. So I can stay home with my children for up to nine years without having to worry about losing my job. That's pretty amazing. So we talk about kids being ready for school and having that family unit, having that early ed, you know, having all of those things. Kids are coming into the classroom at seven years old with so many advantages already, you know. It's really striking. So, one of the things that I discovered, you know, through this trip, is there's no silver bullet. There's so many things that are going into what makes them successful. But it's not necessarily everything that we would, we could or would want to replicate. But there certainly are some things that, that, that we can take out of this. So this is just basically what we just talked about. So, one of some of the things that we can do about it. You know, one of the things that I felt was something that we can grasp here now is, is not only teacher training, making sure that we're requiring the right things from teachers as they're coming out of university and coming into our schools, but making sure in that first three years before they're tenured, are we mentoring them, are we giving them supports, are we evaluating them? And are we having to make the decision of letting them go? That is something we have control over here. And sometimes that's a very difficult thing to do, but it's really the window of opportunity. So, what they do in Finland is they do a lot of that prior to allowing students into university. You have to show that you have an ability to reach out and talk to a group of people. You have, you have to show throughout this process that you can sort of manage a classroom, that you can make eye contact with people as you're talking to them, that you can work with people. You know, there's a certain level of knowledge even before you graduate and enter and try to find a job, that there's, there's a basic level of competency. But here, we have people coming from all over the country, from all different kinds of university programs. And so, we don't have that knowledge of exactly what they're coming to us with. But what we can do is we can observe them for the first year and make sure that they have all the, the abilities that we're looking for in our teachers. And I think that that can be a very daunting and difficult task. And especially in a time where both building level and, and district level administration has in many cases been pinned. You know, we, we're now, many schools now don't have vice principals or, you know, whatever it is. And they don't have the ability to really necessarily evaluate teachers early on as much as they would like to. But it is, I think, worthy of discussion, is being able to use that first three years in a, in a sort of evaluative and mentoring capacity to really make sure our teachers have what they need, but our, that their ability matches what we want. And so that was one of the things that I looked at as sort of my school committee had, is are we doing enough of that here? Building a culture of trust, I think that is, whether it is with our, between administration and teachers, whether that's between parents and schools. But I think really focusing on how can we continue to reach out and build trust? And, you know, one of the things that I had done back when I was chair of the school committee, you know, we had gone through tough negotiations and there was, it took eighteen months, it was brutal. There was a lot of sort of distrust between the school committee and the teachers. And so, what I did at that point as chair was I said, can I come to your leadership meetings? Even just for the first fifteen minutes. And so, nobody had ever done that from the school committee before. So I, as the chair, sat with the teachers and they started out, a lot of it started out with them yelling at me or just saying, we're really unhappy with things. But what it ended up becoming was a really good session of sharing information, of them being able to vent their concerns a lot sooner before it became a big issue. And it just, I think, went a long way to sort of rebuilding that relationship. And so something as simple as that, I think, is a way. And so thinking outside the box, how, what are ways that we can build those relationships? So, when the next contract negotiation rolls around, do we already have a way to talk to each other? Or when that concern comes up? Or when something good happens, are we there to say, you know, this was really good? You know, you guys deserve a thank you for this? So I think looking for ways to build that trust and that sort of common language with each other. And obviously, that's not done overnight, but it does take work. So, you know, one of the actions we decided after this was to talk more about what is education? And what I heard from the educators on this trip is, it really reminded me of the thing, the reason I went into education. It really sort of energized me, you know. And it really reminded me of, you know, to really focus on the good things, you know, to not always look at, oh, the MCAS scores and this and that and the things, but just to remember that relationship with students. Why you like to be a teacher or why you like to be in the classroom. And, and so, you know, I think it's good to stop and talk about, not about the policy here, not to talk about, you know, the MCAS scores and what we need to improve upon, which is so much of what our discussion is around education. But really to talk about education at a very basic level. What are we trying to get out of this? What is our goal with this? We, yes, we want every child to succeed, but how do we do that? You know, aside from which test they take and what score we look at. You know, can we offer kids more individualized planning for their education? Do, should they have a portfolio they take with them to the next year for the next teacher? You know, what are the interesting things that we can do to bring in some of the bits and pieces that we learned? And so, what that was, all three of us have gone out, whether it's in our own communities and to other communities with other groups, to really just talk about what we saw. So, I think, at this, yeah, this is it, so this is the end. And I'll just briefly say, we went to Stockholm and what we saw there, I think, was much more similar to US, the US. And their scores are much more similar to US. They're still above the US, but, but not by a lot. And so it was really interesting to me, they have charter schools. They had just voted last year to now allow for-profit charter schools in Sweden. So they are kind of taking this to another whole level of sort of the idea of educational competition and allowing the marketplace to sort of decide what is working and what isn't working. So, you know, not only do they have, they don't have private schools per se until at this point, they're going to have actual for-profit schools. So it's really, it was really interesting to see that difference. And, one other thing that I will say, is that this year, I believe, Massachusetts is going to be taking the PISA individually outside of the US, because we really want to see where we measure as a state to like a Finland. Because we know we're the top in the US, I mean, we consistently see that. And one of the reasons we wanted to go to Finland is because we know if we want to be globally competitive, we need to look outside of our own shores and really look at globally where they're doing well, because that, that's our competition at this point. And so we're continuing to strive as a state to improve and be, and, and be better. And so, we need to look at where they're doing that. And so we really wanted to be able to see, we have ideas of where we would fall in this ranking within the international community, but we really want to know. So, we'll be seeing that happening, I'm not sure when it's happening, but I know the D E S C has decided, yeah, let's do this, because we want to know where we lie on a global scale. So, that's information I would suggest that we all watch. And I think it'll be very telling to see where we are or what we're doing and how we compare. So, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Good folks?
So I have a quick, today I was listening to NPR and they had talked about this in the book, Passi Solberg?
Yes.
And anyways, they were comparing and here you have South Korea who's number two. And it's a completely different type of educational system. They're in school constantly and here, the days aren't as long. So how do, I don't, I just, I don't see how they can, I guess, be number one and South Korea number two and their systems are completely different.
That, that is really interesting. You know, Finland is, just so you know the background, is the year is one hundred and ninety days, so very similar to us, and the school day is seven hours. So they have a very similar time.
And no homework? Or very...
Upper secondary school, they do have homework, but the lower grades, they don't. That's true. And they really believe that they want the kids to be doing the work with the professionals so that if they have questions or whatever, that they have those resources there. They're also, generally, kids are a lot less scheduled than our kids. So, they're not going from after-school to sports, to music, to whatever. I mean, they're going home or, or they, a lot of the high school kids, they had little jobs, you know, after-school jobs or whatever. But, they have a lot of free time. And so, not only do they have that free time in the school, but they have that free time after-school. And I think that's something that we've lost along the way. So, one of the, my colleagues who was on the trip said yesterday in our talk, she says, I almost felt like it was like back to nineteen fifty's education in some way, that, you know, the kids have a much simpler life.
And from what I understand, they don't have a lot of technology.
That actually, every classroom I saw had, had smart boards.
They're getting there.
Yeah, oh, they, they had...
I saw where South Korea who has a lot of technology.
Yeah, no, I would say Finland has a lot of technology. They have a lot of high-tech companies. They really want kids prepared to use this technology. And one of the fun things, so I have a twelve-year-old son and he's into Minecraft, right? So, I was there over my birthday and he created a whole Minecraft world and had me go in there. And, you know, here he's in Lunenburg and I'm in, you know, in the middle of the Baltic Sea, because we took a ship across. And we're both together virtually, you know. So in, in Sweden, that was developed in Sweden. And so, the school we were in, all the kids had laptops and they were all, they had a lot of Minecraft, like, projects and everything for their classes. So they were all out in the hall at these, they had these like standing cafe table kind of things. And all these middle school kids are all around these laptops doing Minecraft stuff and they had Lego Robotics, a big Lego Robotics program. So they seem to be pretty heavily invested in, in technology.
Within that seven-hour school day, if I heard you correctly too, they're, they're not going to, you know, use a class.
No.
So, you know, when you talk about the comparative seven-hour day in the hundred nineties, it's seven hours of academia.
That's right.
So there is a difference.
Yes, there is a difference.
Within that clock.
Although, I would argue that they have a lot more free time in the day.
Sure, sure.
So, you know, so if they're going to class for forty-five minutes and then they get a fifteen-minute break and they're moving around and they're doing other things. And then the kids, the younger kids also have two recesses a day and they have lunch and they have, so...
Right.
Yeah, it's not...
So it might, it might even out.
It might even out, right.
So, it, it sounds like from the description that eventually there's sort of a percolation of leveling, because your score determines where you go and then the school you're at, it sounds like there's a difference in what type of high school you go to.
Right.
So, is there any complaints from people that they felt it wasn't fair somehow? Or did they just accept, you know, my child just isn't smart enough? Or, you know, how does that work? How, what is the feeling?
Well, you know, the, I, I talked to very few parents. I mean, mostly we were in classrooms and in schools. But interestingly, at the English immersion school, there was a teacher there who was a U, an American. And she had moved there because, you know, her husband was working for a Finnish company or, or whatever. And so she was teaching at this school in Finland and she was very stressed out. And so we had talked to her about this, because she had a child approaching this age. But, she said, it's really up to the kids. I mean, they look at it as it is their responsibility. And so even in the classroom, you would see kids not paying attention or something, you know, as long as they're not being disrupted, the teachers don't bother with them, because it's their responsibility. If they want to learn, they will learn. Here's the information, learn it if you want to. And if you're not going to learn it, it's your own fault. And that's kind of part of their mentality. They're not going to repeatedly make overtures to a student if the student's unengaged. And so, they really see this evaluation as you get what, what you put into it. And so if you end up in a very, very selective upper secondary school, good for you, you earned it. And if you don't, that's where you go. And so I did not hear teachers and the few parents I talked to really say that they felt it was unfair. It was, you get what you work for.
Were, were there different types of teaching methodology then for kids? Like you said, they were evaluated when they're younger to see how they learned? So, how did they differentiate it? You know, like, you know, we talk a lot about that here, about differentiating, because some children are, you know, who are auditory, some are...
Right. And more, this was more at sort of the secondary level. So for the younger kids, there was obviously much more sort of overture to students to keep them engaged.
So they felt, at a certain age then, they're either engaged or not?
Right. When you, when you're approaching that, that time, when you're going, going into upper secondary school, I believe the, it seemed to me, you know, in observation, that you have to put the effort into it. There just seems to be a point where they say, if you're not putting the effort in, and they can identify a real issue, because they do have fairly elaborate special education programs. I toured a, a autism program that was housed within the Espo school that was very elaborate for these students who were very highly involved and it had one-on-one aids, anything, just something like you would see here. So their commitment to special education was similar. But I do think that when, when students, you know, reach maturity, on some level, they kind of said, you know, we're, we're, we're giving it all to you, but you need to make the effort. We can't do the work for you.
So was that at sixteen or was that younger?
I, the only place I really saw it was in the upper secondary school.
Which would be sixteen or older?
Which would be sixteen or older.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you.
And how engaged were the, were the students? More engaged than always?
I'd say they're fairly similar. I didn't see though, the, and it could be that they were on better behavior because we were there. But, I didn't see a lot of, just sort of outbursts or, you know, I didn't see any of that. I saw students who clearly just didn't feel like being there that day, but, you know, my own kids are do that on occasion too. But, you know, they seemed to be fairly involved. You know, I would say pretty standard.
Were they on their phones, texting and...
Oh, they did have phones and they, yeah, they did have them out. There didn't seem to be a lot of restriction around that. You know, one thing I observed was that, and of course, every teacher is different, but on, on sort of, I think, a general level, sort of the, it was much less, like, teachers wore jeans and t-shirts and, you know, it was fairly relaxed. And the relationship between the teachers and the students looked fairly relaxed. And that was interesting to me, because we don't often see that here. But, you know, teachers who were fairly dressed down, you know, sort of weekend wear, I would say sneakers and jeans and a t-shirt, was pretty standard.
What was the strength of the classes, the same like here or the ratio of the teachers and the students?
It was very similar. Yeah, I, I was in some classes that were, you know, the, so the second grade classroom I was in had, had twenty-two students and one teacher. The high school classes I was in ranged depending on the subject matter, because they choose their classes similar to we do. So some classes had, excuse me, had, you know, ten students and some classes had twenty students depending on what the class was.
Within the classroom, in the upper sec, secondary, in different subjects, would the teachers, would the kids be working at their own level as opposed to someone sitting right next to them, more individualized?
Well, I mean, I, I didn't spend a lot of time, you know, a day in a classroom. But I, you know, what I saw was that students seemed to be following a lecture, like they would here, and then be doing some independent work. I didn't see students doing vastly different work from each other within a classroom. But, that would be something, I think, like we would have more in high school with more choosing what classes you're taking. choosing what classes you're taking, for example, rather than, you know, I didn't see a lot of varied curriculum going on. One thing that was interesting and something that's fairly new, so every, so most, 95% of the population is Lutheran, and they do teach religion in the schools as part of the day. That was the one sort of, I would say, non-academic, if you want, you know. And they were doing a lot of differentiation for that, at grade, in the grade, lower grades, because they're starting to see more students come in of different religions. So they were doing that as a pull-out. So they would pull out the Muslim children or the Catholic children to do something different. So that was like the most obvious differentiating, I would say. And that's something fairly new. They just hadn't really dealt with that before. It's, it was sort of interesting to me, because, you know, we, we deal with those sorts of things all the time, with different cultures coming in. And so this is a newer issue for them, because they've had so little immigration for so many years. So they're just starting to see with sort of their tech boom, more immigration.
Oh, yes, you touched upon, upon my question a little bit just then. But looking at how teachers are using the time they have with the students, for one intention to, to be possible for a teacher, there usually has to be less lecture and more of an in-class activity, or a brief lecture and then an assignment where the teacher can go around and work with each student one-on-one. What sort of, did you see much of that? Or was it fairly, was it fairly lecture-based learning time and then students could ask questions as, during the lecture?
I saw very little lecturing, but some of my colleagues who were in different classrooms and they saw more of that. So I think a lot of it depended on the teacher and the subject matter. But I was in, you know, a math class, a science class, a second grade class, I was in a sort of a global studies class, and a lot of it was project-based or, or group work-based. And so, like in the math class, they were talking about compounding interest. And so, you know, he was giving them a problem and they were working in groups to, to discuss and solve the problem together, for example. And that's something that could have been very straight lecture-based. But he was really having students engage with each other and he was walking around to each group and talking with them. So that would be an example of, of one of the lessons I saw.
I too heard much of the segment, the programs running on that radio. And I'm going to make an effort to go back and listen to.
Yeah, I can hear it with my kids in the car, I want to get those too.
Share with some of my colleagues.
Yeah.
What I was hearing, you had two different cultures, South Korea and Finland. And they had two different approaches. Very high-powered teachers, very high, the South Korean group had a very intense curriculum. They were almost on the opposite, they were on the opposite end of the spectrum in terms of one, children in South Korea were in school from sunrise, they went home, they were up until 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock. People in Sweden, laid-back. They still got the job done. And I'm trying to figure out what they were doing. I know there's a, it's a holistic approach, there's a very different culture, government provides all of the things that you shared. But there seems to be some, there's more than a core injury, there's something that's happening there that enables them, their children to achieve at a high level. And it's more than, than memory, it's more than, I'm trying to wrap my arms, what are they doing differently from South Korea and other places that are very different? What are they doing?
One of the interesting, I happen to know a little bit about the South Korean education, and one of the interesting comparisons between what you were saying about Finland and South Korea is the highest need educators are held on, held in, in both countries. And now, something that just sticks out to me right away. To be a teacher in South Korea, you were very held in very, very highest need.
And so what drives that? That's, you know, part of, is it a cultural?
It's that overall cultural agreement on reports of education, both of those, both of those areas, how'd you share?
Yeah.
How, how is this measured? I mean, how, what determines that Finland is number one? And is it that every single student is actually participating in this measurement? I mean, how is it determined that as a whole, you know, I'm just curious. And, and same thing, how is South Korea number two? And does it really encompass the entire population of children?
Well, I would, this is what I would say to that. It encompasses the population of children who are in school. Because one of the things we talked about, we had several sort of debriefs, sort of meetings with everybody, you know, after a couple days of visiting schools, we would all get together at night and talk about what we saw. So many of these people had gone to China, for example, which is very high achieving as well. But they do not have children in school who are not able to be in school, meaning they don't have special education, for example. And they don't, they really, they're much more willing to sort of cut out students that really don't have a future.
Right, and that's what I was curious about, is whether or not it's true. I mean, I think the one thing that happens in this country is every student is, is supposed to go to school.
Right.
Every student, regardless of their ability.
Right, right.
They're supposed to go to somewhere.
And that is true of Finland as well.
And so, yeah, that was what I was wondering.
But that's, I don't know about South Korea, if that is true in South Korea or not. I don't know enough about South Korea to make that kind of statement. But I do know, in talking with my colleagues who went to China, that that certainly was not the case in China. And so you do kind of have to know what you're looking at and what you're measuring, right? But that's one of the reasons Finland is so intriguing to, I think, people in the US and to us, is because they are so similar to us in many ways. And in particular, sort of the time in the classroom and, and all of that, sort of their, and culturally, culturally, there is some similarity, at least the Northern European sort of background, I suppose you could say, or whatever. But, I mean, I think when you look at the time that they're spending with students, how are they, how are they using that time to get what they're getting? What is the difference? And I think that's why that's so interesting to us, because that kind of goes against a lot of the things that many of us in education have been talking about for years, lengthening the school day, getting rid of the agrarian calendar and going year-round education and increasing the hours in the classroom. Because clearly, if we had kids in the classroom more, that we could teach them more, because we're going to shove it in there. So, but Finland is doing all of this with a very similar timeframe.
Well, what, how do they spend their out-of-school hours? Is there any possibility of, you know, how the family might interact or the community might interact, where there's learning going on that somehow, you know, it's, it either, either there's more essential learning happening rather than more content. Obviously, there's only so much time in a day. And if they're going to school the same amount of time, the actual content probably is varying. And so, like you said, they concentrate on methodology of how the teachers are supposed to teach. And then, I assume, because there's this culture, which I think is very important, I think that's an enormous part of education, that at a very young age, requires the student to be actually responsible for what they decide to learn.
Right. And there, there definitely seem to be, from everything from, you know, I have never seen so many bikes outside of a school.
So, have you seen so many?
Bikes, bicycles.
Okay.
So they're riding bikes, walking to school on their own at very young ages. You know, first grade. They're off, walking to school by themselves. Our tour guide, we did have a tour when we first got there, in like a bus tour or whatever, around the city to kind of get an idea. And so she had raised her kids, she was, you know, native Finnish and had raised her kids there. She said, "Kids are expected at very young ages to be very independent." That it was, it was nothing to think of, you know, giving your four-year-old some money to run down to the store and getting a local bread, for example. Like, this was normal. That this culture of pride in the country, you know, among other people, and it really trickled down to, you're not worried about your kid walking to school, because of course nothing would happen to them. You're not worried about, she said, mothers routinely would walk their babies in their strollers, and if they were sleeping, leave them outside if they had to run into the pharmacy or something, on the sidewalk, and let them sleep.
Don't be in jail later.
Right. Well, and it's, and she, and she said, you know, she had remembered there was a big outcry in Finland that a woman who was visiting the US was arrested because she did this. And the Finnish people were outraged that they would arrest this mother for doing this, because that was standard practice in, in Finland. So, you know, I think there's, there's such a cultural difference there. And I think you're right, that there is sort of more responsibility placed on students for themselves. I think that is true. But it's also deeply rooted sort of in their history and their culture. So I, I don't know if it's something that you can, you can't turn it on and off like a switch, clearly.
But I, I think that it does have a significant effect.
Can you say more about the early education piece? Because I think that's very different in the United States.
Yes, that is very different. And, you know, and I really don't know a lot more than what I shared already, is that, you know, all, all educators, all people who work with children go through this very rigorous training. And that in and of itself, I think, speaks a lot to only, not only their commitment to children and education, but the resources they're willing to put into it, both as a country, but also as individuals, going into these programs. So, you know, I think when you look at childhood readiness, even though they're, they're going to school later than our kids are, I think they're being exposed to a lot more at an earlier age. And, you know, whether that's structured or play-based, it's still educational. And so if, if kids are getting a really high-quality education from, from one, you know, I, I think too, that that is one of the keys in this, is that if they're really getting this sort of really high-quality preschool, daycare, early-on experience, that has to, that has to be a factor in this.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only differentiating factor. I mean, if you take out the hours in the school day, I mean, then you get a lot less...
Well, I think there are some others. I think, I think the teacher training is a big piece too.
Well, right, yeah.
You know, I think for children and families to not have to worry about healthcare, to not have to worry about unemployment, to not have to worry about maternity leave, you know, I think that, you know, it's funny, because we ask them, "Well, you know, your taxes must be so high." And, and they say, "Yeah, well, it's, you know, they, like, what do they call it? Oh, the maternity leave, yeah." They call it the mommy tax. Well, we all love moms, you know, of course we're going to support them. We want people to have children and be happy. And when you look at sort of happiness or quality of life indicators, they have a very, very high quality of life, because their, you know, their healthcare's not tied to their job, you know? I mean, they don't have to ever worry about that. And so that's really, you know, you have to think about from a family perspective. You know, what does that do to a family? You know, you don't ever have to worry about going without prenatal care.
So no wonder why they're so, I mean, I don't mean this to sound dismissive, but it's no wonder why they're so mellow. I mean, there's a lot less stress. Really, I mean, when you think about what the average family, you know, the middle class of the United States has to tolerate, especially in the last four or five years, it's healthcare, it's a job, it's how we, you know, it's childcare.
Well, and we asked, we asked the Ministry of Education, one of the things we asked about was, you know, Nokia was a big Finnish company and they, they did not do well. You know, they did not keep up with technology in the smartphone, phone industry and all that. So they did some massive layoffs. They said, "Well, jeez, that must have had a big impact." And they, they said, "No, not really, because, you know, one thing that we found is our people are well-educated and they're entrepreneurs." We have so many startups. A lot of these people who were tech people and were laid off, it's easy for them to start a new company, because they don't have to worry about healthcare. You know, they have a safety net, so they are free to say, "I'm going to start a new company," based on, you know, look at Angry Birds. I mean, who thought that was a money maker? You know, but that started in Finland. And, you know, and they said, "We have so many tech startups, so if people lose a job with Nokia, they go create their own company." You know, so what better way to foster innovation and entrepreneurship? But they have this social safety net that's well-developed and you don't have to worry about your pension, you don't have to worry about your healthcare, you don't have to worry about any of that, because it's not tied to your job.
You, you mentioned daycare and, so is that just for people who work? How does that work? You said one to seven.
You choose, you don't have to.
So is there a limit?
compulsory education starts at seven.
Right.
So you can choose to, if you want to go back to work, you can put your children in, in daycare, but you don't have to. So you just, you just note, you know, you find the local daycare center and you can access it if you want.
So it, so parents often are doing the readiness for school then?
Yes, well, yes, because they have such a well-developed maternity leave.
So is there some standard that they try to say, "We want your child to have like...
No.
...how many languages or anything like that?
No.
When they enter in at seven? How, you know, there's no standard prior to seven?
No.
So because of the size of the country, could you speak to the possibility of a smaller spread in socioeconomic differences and cultural differences? I mean, does that, there's, there's obviously, you said recently there's been a shift there a little bit culturally, but...
But it's still very minor. I mean, they're very low immigration. So they have 5.9 million people in the country. So very similar to Massachusetts, which is what makes it really interesting. They certainly have socioeconomic differences. I mean, there are wealthy people who have summer homes and that sort of thing, and, and we talked a little bit about that. But you don't see the really depth of poverty. You don't see kids not eating, for example. You know, they do get free meals at school, obviously, but there is more sort of, sort of social assistance available, let's say, for families who are struggling. So certainly there is, there, there are socioeconomic differences, but you're not going to see the vast difference that we see here. So you're not going to see the super, super, super wealthy as much. And you're not going to see the depths of sort of poverty that you might see in part, not necessarily parts of Massachusetts, but maybe in Appalachia and that sort of thing.
And you said that the schools are the same across the country, they have the same funding across the country, no matter where they are, right?
Well, the funding is interesting. They, they have similar funding. Fifty-eight percent of the funding comes from local. So, but it's not, in, they said, they basically say what they want their budget to be and the people pay for it. I, you know, that was...
Just wouldn't that be nice?
I think that's really interesting. And they...
Just like Massachusetts.
Yes. But, but, so there is local funding, but there is a lot of federal assistance. So that was the school we talked to, you know, their, their funding was 58% local. But if you go into some of those Lapland, you know, outlying areas, where there is probably less industry and less ability, you know, less population density to be able to pay for this, the state will pick it up. They do have a fairly high standard of funding education. So they do make a real effort to make up the difference, let's say.
Do we know if the country has a lot of debt? National debt or personal debt? Do we know?
I don't know. I don't know that. So I'm not even going to guess, because I can't speak to that.
As far as their socialized medicine, do the, their healthcare, is it a good healthcare system? Or are there doctors and nurses leaving the country to go to other countries? And are they, they must be paid by the government?
Yes.
So how is their healthcare system?
I will not answer, I can't answer that. We focused on education. But I can tell you, in talking with the teachers and the parents and the people we talked to, asking them about the healthcare, they were very happy with it. They felt it was very successful. But that's the only, that's, that's all I know about it.
And do they pay for university?
No, university is free, just like everything else.
It's free.
Yes. Even textbooks, everything.
But they want to leave the country?
Well, they can, and they can apply to leave the country, but then it's no longer free. So they fund their own university system, fully. And even, like I said, textbooks, which is quite something.
So what percentage of the 16-year-olds don't actually land South Korea?
Less than 1%.
Can you do the question?
How many 16-year-olds do not score high enough to be able to get into upper-secondary or whatever? It was very, very few, I mean, less than, far less than 1% in the school. You know, we asked at a couple of the schools and they said, they had heard of one student in the past five years that didn't. I mean, that was, I mean, it was very rare.
And what percentage of the population goes on to university?
I think I did have that information somewhere and I can't remember. It was a fairly, well, it was a fairly high percentage that would go to either university or...
Right.
or.
Right.
An upper polytechnical program, uh, because they're all free. And so most of the population chose one or the other. Now, what, what percentage did, I don't know, what percentage did the university versus the polytechnical?
And is there an opportunity for somebody who didn't go, say, right away, to go later?
Yes.
Or to go back?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Um, but often not into an education program. You don't see a lot of people going into education as a second career.
Me, me, being a teacher.
Being a teacher.
Right, there's something else they could go back to.
Yes, yes. And there, and there was a lot of adult retraining, training programs, certificate programs, that sort of thing, and that was very, very popular.
That's great.
But.
And that's also painful, right?
Yes. And interestingly, so Finnish is a very difficult, is sort of a strange language, and all people who immigrate into the country are given free Finnish lessons, so they can all learn to speak Finnish. So that's provided by the government. So I actually, we were walking around town one night, late one night, and we went into this store that was owned by a woman from Ohio, and she and her friend had gone over to Finland to open the store of all vintage, um, American clothing, because it's very popular there. And she said, yeah, you know, I haven't, and I said, isn't it hard to run a business here and you don't speak Finnish? She says, yes, I've been here for a year and I haven't gotten around to taking my Finnish lessons. But, she says, I will get Finnish lessons until I speak Finnish, provided by the government. And, but she said everybody speaks English. So she says, I just haven't really had the desire to take the time to do it. She says, I'll do it eventually. But she even had a very, um, successful business in a lot of cowboy boots, like used cowboy boots, and, um, it was near Halloween, so a lot of American vintage, like Halloween costumes, and candy bars, and Coke, and everything else, and it was quite a popular store.
So am I hearing you say, if we separate out all of the cultural differences, the stuff, you know, we're never, the United States is definitely going to be a Finland.
Right.
But we do have schools, and we do have teachers. What I thought I heard you say earlier today, what I heard in the program this morning was, job one is teacher training. It's intense, it's rigorous. First-year teachers don't go into the classroom long. There's a, there's an internship, and there's a protocol for helping teachers get to be good. So what I'm hearing is at the end of the day, when you're dealing with the curriculum, when you're dealing with the approach, there's something about the quality of the teaching, that interaction with the teacher, the student, and the material that produces a particular outcome.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to good teachers here in Littleton.
Yeah, absolutely.
They stand out, they're remarkable. So there's, there's really no mystery in that piece. The other piece, you know, we're mixing apples and oranges, you know?
Right, well, and, and that's what it takes, really, I think, you know, when these discussions are helpful in sort of teasing out, you know, and that's one of the things that we talked about a lot, is teasing out, what can we do? What's an action that we can do? And what is just, um, part of the culture there? You know, what are the things that we can pull out? And, you know, I don't think any of it is easy, but I definitely think that is a huge component to their success. And they have seen a shift. I mean, they have actively been doing this for forty years. And so, you know, they were sort of, uh, you know, run-of-the-mill, you know, probably middle, you know, whatever, wherever they thought they were, and they thought they had to improve. They really made a conscious decision, and that was a big piece of it, was teacher training. And, uh, and consistency. You know, they made a decision over forty years to do this, and they have not wavered from that.
Now, does the United States, do we recognize all their degrees? Do we recognize a doctor there, a doctor here, and so on and so forth? Because I know we don't for many countries. If they, if it's a bachelor's from there, I'm just trying to compare, you know.
So if a Finnish teacher wanted to come teach in the U.S.?
Say a lawyer, or, I, I know they have to take the bar exam, but, you know, a doctor, can they come and, um?
Do we have, like, reciprocal acknowledgement of their licensing?
Yes.
I don't know. With Finland, I don't know.
Because I know that, uh, that's one of the levels here that we want to say, uh, you know, comparatively, we are higher, and so you have to take, and you have to go again through four years of.
Right. And we do that with other states, too. I mean, I'm sure you've all seen on the D E S C website, um, what states we take certification from and what we don't, you know? And there's always updating of that when you look at testing a curriculum and everything else, to see what is comparable. But I don't know. I don't know internationally exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Benson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm having a tight time. After May, I'll have to remember.
Oh, my daughter plays field hockey against Littleton.
And she'll appreciate it all the more, Mom.
Oh, yeah.
Carry it all in.
Oh, thank you so much.
Oh, really, Cecily, I know you're injured, too, and you've been a special layout before the big snowstorm.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. A pleasure.
Sluck Manox, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it. I'm really in the town as a whole. Members of the Pursuit of Excellence Task Force, thank you, and Jeremy. I'd like to thank Alex here, because Alex set this up, got in touch with your office and everything, so it made it happen. So thank you very much, Alex. Okay, let's take a ten-minute recess, and I'll take a motion for that. Motion made, seconded. Favor, recessed.
Yeah, thank you, I hope it was, uh, interesting. We watched it.
Can you edit this?
Yeah, just, just, just.
Can you, can you give me a favor? Does West Grand?